Everybody please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you made me see this. And where did Belinda take off to?
Home.
She just left now, huh?
I mean, home here.
All right, but it was nice, just real quickly, seeing a dear lady who was a counselor here for, what, four or five years, something like that?
Yeah.
Yep. And yeah, perhaps even six. She was first appointed, then she won the seat, and, yeah.
Yeah, probably six years, yeah.
Bless her heart, it was good to see her. Uh, roll call, please.
Summer Robinson, position one.
Larry Grant, position two.
Becky Campbell, position four.
Tammy Kaufman, position five.
Carl Popoff, mayor, and of course, our city administrator, Jody Fritz, is present. Counselor Pagano has sort of an emergency taking place at home, so he's not going to be able to attend this evening. All right, let's get right in. We've got a proclamation. It's somewhere. I think it's in here. Thank you, ma'am. This proclamation designating the second Sunday in December 2019 as Worldwide Candle Lighting Day. Whereas every year in the United States, nearly 150,000 infants, children, teens, and young adults die, and countless tens of thousands are born still or are miscarried. Whereas we recognize that our children are our country, state, and city's most valuable resource. Whereas the work of local chapters of the Compassionate Friends provides a caring environment in which for each parent, siblings, and grandparents can work through their grief with the help of others traveling the same road. Whereas the Compassionate Friends Worldwide Candle Lighting held the second Sunday in December has become a symbolic day when these children are remembered around the globe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Carl Popoff, mayor of the city of Gold Beach, hereby declare and proclaim the second Sunday of December 2019 as Worldwide Candle Lighting Day for the city of Gold Beach. Be it further resolved that all residents are encouraged to observe this day by lighting a candle for one hour at 7:00 PM the second Sunday of December in support of bereaved families in the city of Gold Beach, and participate in other appropriate activities and remembrance of all the children who have died. So proclaim this fourth day of November 2019 by myself. Thank you. Now we have citizens' comments here at this time. Uh, Mr. Johnson, there you are. What I might do, because this has to do with, I'm assuming, what we have coming up.
But it'll just take a moment, will it?
Pardon me?
It'll just take one moment. It's just a, yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge some appreciation, that's all.
Well, in that particular case, if that was it, I didn't know exactly...
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't explain very well on paper, and I apologize for that.
No, that's quite all right. Oh, yeah. All right, if you'd like to.
Sure.
Why don't you come on, sir?
Sure. I just...
And then just state your name for the record, please.
Okay. Clayton Johnson, I live in Gold Beach on Matier Road, and I just want to reiterate my appreciation to all of you, to the city administrators, to the mayor, to all the council, for a, what I feel is a much more, in recent days, months, a much more proactive role in enforcing the dangerous building ordinances. And the one that's probably near and dear to me has been a quote "dangerous building," becoming more dangerous on a daily basis on Matier Road for over a decade, as many of you know. And I'm very appreciative that steps seem to be taken on that one in particular, but any of them. Dangerous buildings are a huge concern, too. The welfare of the city and all of us, and anybody, anybody that happens to wander through town. It's something that should be acknowledged, and I appreciate that you're all doing that.
Well, thank you, sir. We do have, yeah, it's important to us, too, it truly is. Sometimes the wheels of the government grind a little bit slowly, but then that's because we have to as well jump through all the hoops.
Yep.
And we have to make sure that what we're doing cannot come back upon us. But we are, later on, we will be discussing at least, I think, two, two different properties that... But at any rate, that'll come a little bit later in the meeting. But thank you, sir, for being here.
You're welcome. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and we're gonna have it right now, basically. Okay, we've got a public hearing. Someone opened up the public hearing at 6:37. And this has to do with the tax lot 894-270 Button Lane. Yes, ma'am?
I need to declare a conflict of interest. My parents own a property next to this corner, and I cannot discuss this.
All right, thank you, ma'am, for that. And I do believe, because it is a public hearing, that if anyone is present that would like to speak at this, yes?
Um, can we, let me do the staff report real quick, and then Mr. Michaels is here to be heard.
All right, fine, thank you.
So, um, in August, at the end of August, I notified the council of the potential for a dangerous building pursuant to the code, and you instructed me to start that process. And so unfortunately, I didn't have it in time for the October meeting, but that allowed the property owner a little more time, hopefully, to take care of the property. The mobile home that's on the property was burned in a fire in April. And so since then, some of the structure has been removed, so there has been some progress since April, but there's still a significant amount of it there. So tonight, what the code requires is that the council shall determine by resolution whether or not the building is dangerous. So in the ordinance and resolution section, further in the meeting, I've included two resolutions there. One is that it is not a dangerous building, and the one that it is a dangerous building. And then there's four criteria that, that if you decide that it is a dangerous building, you require a definition of the code, then you need to cite to either A, B, C, or D. And those are listed on page, page 13 of the packet. And it can be one of the four, or all of the four, it's just whichever you do decide. If it is a dangerous building, then just let me know, so I can insert that into the resolution. And then I just want to clarify, Counselor Kaufman, you won't be voting, or are you going to be participating in the hearing?
I'm voting no, I do.
I think you're allowed to have discussion, but you can't vote. So, but it's whatever you want to do, so you don't want to participate at all?
Yeah, I think it would be probably more appropriate that she did, huh?
I understand legally, I think that she's allowed to participate, but just can't make the motion or vote. But if you don't want to participate, I just want to...
No, but actually, I think her instincts on this are good.
Okay. So, Counselor Pagano is gone this evening, as Mr. Mayor had said, due to a family emergency. So he would be the beginning vote for this evening, so who will be our beginning vote, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we'll just go back to Counselor Madison, position number one. There's any of these way to go on this.
Okay, so for the, for the rest of the evening, when we, when Mr. Mayor calls for the vote, it'll start with Counselor, position one. Okay, so that is all I have, and Mr. Michaels, the property owner, is in the audience. If you have any questions for, for staff, just let me know.
Yeah, Mr. Michaels, if you would come up and just state your name for the record, please.
George B. Michaels, fourth. And if I had to check the mail this afternoon, I probably wouldn't be here. So... I spent my morning, I removed another section. My plan before I got this was to have the rest of it leveled by the end of the week, beginning next. Can I show you a picture of what I removed today? That, please, Mr. Michaels.
Uh, you want to be able to show that picture, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
She's a lot of head to, I'm sorry. And I've been almost three months fighting with, trying to get a bin dropped off from Wes. He's been swamped trying to... But I've been in touch with him. In fact, the guy probably hates to hear from me, because I call him every week to say, hey, where's my bin? He says, I'm working on it. I've got scrap metal that's stacked, and it'll be removed as soon as I get a bin to put in, but I can't see... I can't afford to pay CTR to take metal that I can get rid of for free, if somebody makes money on it. CTR's got a racket going, they charge you to take it, and then it's around itself, scrap, so to me, that's just wrong. And I have been in touch with Wes on, like I said, a continual basis, trying to get him to bring a bin, so I could sort of... You know, I had to, he brought one bin, I put a bunch of scrap metal in it, and took it, and he hasn't got anything back. Do you guys have this, or does everybody have? Okay. Now, this is, as you can see, there's only a small section of it left at this time. And it's just in the back, and like I said, I don't have it very good. But it'll be over the week, at the latest. I dropped the whole section of it right to the day, turn back to the, to the bathroom. All that's left is a bathroom and a back bedroom. And I guess we'll just have to throw it out there, and I'm gonna drop it down, and the next day or two.
Can you email me one of these photos, George?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go give you the address after the meeting.
And, uh...
Counselor, do you have any questions to ask of Mr. Michaels? Yes, sir? Thank you. As far as the rest, like the flooring and all that stuff, do you, what are your plans to do?
Well, I've already been in touch with, the flooring's gonna be filled up to the frame. I've already been in touch with the planning department at the county level. I've already talked to an engineer about the possibility of rebuilding on the, on the frame. I'm trying to get this done without, and then use a loan to provide the materials I need, instead of using a loan to try to get it cleaned up, and now I have to take one after three buildings. And that's where I'm at at this point, anyway. I am on the next day to come.
Any other questions from the council? So basically, what I'm understanding is that you're indeed making active attempts to remove, get that taken care of.
Yes, sir. You could also notice the trailer that's in the picture, it's full, it's set in there empty in this picture, just, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything for the wish to add?
No, that's, that's it. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get it done, and I'm... I feel like I'm beating my head on the wall trying to get rid of scrap metal, but it, because the pilot just keeps going, but...
I understand. All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
Uh, is there anyone else who would like to, in the audience? This is a public meeting. They would like to comment. If not, then we'll go on to the public hearing at 6:45. All right, counsel? Yes, ma'am?
I would be inclined to revisit this in a month with more pictures to see if, four weeks from now, since he says he's gonna have it completed outside of the metal in a week, that if we revisit this in four weeks, we can see how much progress it needs to make. I don't want it to fall off the radar, but I don't think we should go dangerous building right yet. Because he thinks it's progress.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the, the section 5.370 that I was referring to earlier, there's, the bottom section of that says, "Or the council shall have the power to order the building made safe, and to prescribe what extra things must be done, and render the same safe." So we have in the past allowed, in fact, one of the ones we're talking about later, we've done that, where although the one on Matier Road, it was declared a dangerous building, and then the council made specific requirements. So, um, yes, we can revisit it in a month, but, um, but we have to make a determination tonight whether it is a dangerous building or it's not. And you can make that determination that it is a dangerous building, subject to one of those four things, and then prescribe what needs to be done in the next four weeks.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And clarify that. Counsel, what would be your will? Counsel, counsel came up, I think, with a reasonable thing. But first of all, as the administrator stated, a declaration has to be made, as whether it is dangerous or not. Would anyone here like to go ahead and make that declaration?
And you can also, like the A, B, C, and D, if you don't feel like it meets any of those, you can say that you feel like it doesn't meet the four standards for a dangerous building. However, it is, you do have the authority to prescribe abatement, which could be those four weeks, so...
Yes, ma'am?
Too late for public comment.
I'm sorry, sir, we're in deliberation right now. We had that opportunity, and I gave everybody that opportunity during the open hearing itself. So... Anyway, counsel?
I, I lost it, sorry. It's gone.
Counselor Brennan?
I would make the motion that you, Counsel, adopt a resolution, R 1920-05, a resolution regarding the dangerous building determination of a structure located at 9427 Old Button Lane, with the stipulation that we would give the owner the four-week period of time to finish completing the removal of the dangerous part that's on the floor of the structure.
So would you say D, a structure in such weak or weakened condition, or devastated?
Yes.
Okay.
It was surprising as I stood on that back section, take the underloose of it, that it held me.
Just cite to section D?
Section, oh, section, uh, in violation of section D of the dangerous building.
Okay, so, um, so the motion is adopt 1920-05, is a dangerous building, subject to section D, and prescribe a four-week time period for the applicant to get the property cleaned up, and get the building cleaned up, and come back.
May I ask a question, it's fine? Or do we have to address the motion before I can ask a question?
Uh, we do have, the motion has been made. We do not have a second issue yet, but I'm gonna go ahead and, and let you...
Is there a fine associated with the declaration of a dangerous building?
Is there one, I'm sorry?
A fine associated with that?
No, not at this time, as I know.
Not at this time?
Okay.
All right, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made, seconded by Counsel, counsel. Uh, discussion? Question? Aye. Motion passes, 3-0. Counselor's calling, I'm being a little...
So if you could either email me or bring me the photos tomorrow, and then...
Sure. I'll sign my own.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, afternoon, so I can go back to work tomorrow. Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right. So we have ordinances, resolutions. This is R 1920-05, resolution related, dangerous building determination. Administrator?
Okay, we just did that one, so we're...
Oh, that's right. That wasn't the one we had.
Yep.
Okay, we have final order, GBC-1905.
Um, Counselor Kaufman, I just want to make sure that I, did I capture the conditions that you wanted in the order?
Tammy?
Yeah, let me double check. I didn't know if you heard or not.
I wasn't trying to rush you.
There was something out of order above, and it's confused me.
Okay.
Is everybody, you may not know out there what we're speaking about. This has to do with the marijuana retail store. That we had, actually, we had a planning meeting in essence just a couple of weeks ago pertaining to this. So anyhow, we do have a decision to make, the motion. Counsel, do you have anything that you would like to say about this?
No, I think it just needs to be signed, doesn't it?
You have to vote to approve the order, and then, and then Mr. Mayor can sign it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the order. GBD 1905, was I correct?
Yeah, GBC.
GBC.
GBC 1905. How was seconds?
Motion had been made, and then seconded. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed, you have a question. Okay, moving along.
You can pass your question.
Yes. Your case is filled.
Okay, the, this resolution, Mr. Mayor, is just formalizing at the October 14th meeting. As, as we had discussed earlier in the year, we had applied for a state, state safe water, safe drinking water revolving line.
Same, we talked about, we said ministry.
And I, and I did actually talk to the, our rep for our region today, because we had, I'm used to seeing something a little more formal from them, like in the way of a letter or something. And we'd gotten an email from their main office saying that it was approved, but I hadn't, we hadn't actually gotten anything on paper. But she assured, assured me that, yes, that that's, that it has been approved. It's just in the, basically, it's like the loan processing center of the state. And so we have to adopt formally that diarists are engineered record, which they are actually already, but they want to see an actual resolution for this particular one. So we had discussed that at the 14th. You guys had approved it, but this is formalizing that.
Anyway, motion. Yes, ma'am?
I make the motion to Counsel adopt resolution R 1920-04, a resolution designating diar partnership as engineered record for SW, SDWRLF project number S20001, along from Business Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority for specific water infrastructure capital improvements as identified in the adopted April 2016 Water Master Plan.
Yeah, that's quite the motion, you know?
I'll second that.
Most of it may have been seconded, but we're in a moment.
I wanted to make sure there was no way that the state can say that wasn't what we wanted.
The project could be done, but I'm not through the votes. All right, motion has been made, it has been seconded. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 Motion passed, you have a question.
Thank you.
All right, now we have lift program application, possible site locations. Uh, this is under miscellaneous and what have you. I read through this lift, lift program, and, um, counsel, to me, I'd be real, real fearful about going into something like this, to be honest with you. But, um, at any rate, let's go ahead and discuss it.
I'm, I'm gonna have Counselor Kaufman and Counselor Madison speak to this, because they've been working on the housing task force.
Part of the housing task force is to come up with affordable workforce housing. Another part of it is working on transitional housing from unhoused to housed, but the part that I'm working on is, is the other two. And we have the two properties possible available. We've offered the Fourth Street property in the past. We had, had a discussion about taking a chunk of the Gauntlet side of the property repurchase from Park, and that for affordable housing. And then the county has two lots on June Street that might be suitable. Seems a little steep, so I don't know if that would work with this lift grant or not, if the county would be willing to work with us. But those are the four that we've identified. The concept of the lift grant is to get something done quickly. And, and Neighborhood SoundCloud has agreed, it was actually their idea to do the, the grant application, and to basically take over the project. Our part would mostly be communicating, and at some point, we'd have to keep the property probably over to the state.
Probably to who, please?
Probably the state.
Yes.
There was discussion of possibly doing a land trust. That might take longer than the lift grant would allow, which we either transfer to the trust or do the state. The state wants control over the land once it, because they're funding it.
So? Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brennan's first.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir. I just want, who did you say was gonna build?
Neighborhood SoundCloud would be the lead agency, and they would end up managing it, taking care of whatever. We would just basically be donating the property and helping get the process through.
What kind of bill, what kind of policy would it be? I mean, is it like...
The concept on, on the Fourth Street would probably be aplex, whether it be two to four. Right now, it's only zone for duplex and maybe an accessory roaming unit, is that right?
No, the, um, the Fourth Street one is 3R.
Oh, 3R, so that would be multi-family?
Yes.
I don't know if you'd get more than six in there, four to six would be pretty max. Would you disagree with that?
Counselor, I was wondering, would this be something like the property that's on York Press? Remember, it's right next to the Russian?
Probably something like that, up or up and down.
Yeah, they manage that as well.
Neighborhood SoundCloud.
Right.
And of course, one wouldn't have to be fully accessible, they have more than four. It's right across the street from the hospital, so it's a good location for anybody that might have special needs. And then we're talking about the one on Gauntlet. That might be enough property for a college cluster, which I mean, Jody, he actually, he included some of the descriptions from our study of what those look like. I don't know if it's enough property or not, but that is a concept. So that would be, um, small units, individual, a parking lot, instead of everybody having their own parking space. And, you know, green space and making it decent.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the out-of-pocket money that the city would have to come up with, other than donating the land?
It would be donating staff time. There'd be no cash. It, it would be micro-scale mall that they're gonna ask for, um, us to finance their system development charges. But I think we would be open to any affordable project in doing that.
Well, the what? May I?
Yeah.
If, since you have a crystal wall, uh, could you guesstimate system develop, what did you call it, system development charges?
Right.
So a system development charge is when the water and sewer and streets, when you have a new development, those are charged that goes with it. And ours is around ten thousand and appropriate per unit. And so, like, if they were gonna go sixplex, that'd be sixty grand right out of their po, out of their pocket right away. That might keep them from being able to get the project done quickly. But if we could finance those, um, which I believe we could, um, predominantly because the idea of system development charges is to help us with the long-term cost of the production. So I, I think we probably could fund that. It, it would be a separate discussion. It would not be decided tonight.
Yeah, the, um, the utility code has a provision for that. Um, and it's just, it's handled at the staff level. It's a ten-year loan. Um, there's, the interest rate is based on what the Fed rate is plus a certain amount. Um, I'm not gonna say we do it all the time because we don't have that many developments, but we did one recently. The one that's down by the port, those little cottages that are being developed, they, they have financed their system development charges, so it's, it's something that's, you know, we do it. Yeah, yeah, so we, we do that. Um, one of the things I wanted to mention on, on the Fourth Street property, we are, there's, there is an issue, um, with an easement that we need to get resolved. But that needs to get resolved whether the council decides to do a project there or not. So I, I just wanna throw that out there that there is something that we have to deal with the attorney on. So there will be a little bit of cost for us as far as that goes, but not specifically related to this project. We need to deal with that one way or the other. So, um, part of that, and I wanted to bring this up, is that, um, we have to get an appraisal done of the value of what the easement is. So I'm gonna be contacting the appraisal firm that did the appraisal for the water intake property to have them. They do work for ODOT as well, so they, they're familiar with public entities. So I'm just throwing that out there, that we, there is this issue there that we need to deal with, but we have to deal with it anyway, so.
Counsel Brennan, you have something?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is, are you at these projects in the urban renewal lottery, no, probably?
Um, no.
It can't be urban renewal.
Well, it, the, the corridor's right there. The park property itself is in the urban renewal district, but the new property that we purchased is not. So, um, and the Fourth Street one, the library, we included that in the district so that we could assist them, but, um, but it actually goes just right down Fourth Street, so, no.
Oh, yeah. That's where it goes.
Because we could use some urban renewal dollars if, if it was.
Yeah, that's a good question, Counsel. Thank you.
Although, um, that's a good question. I would contact Elaine and see if it would be possible to, to trade out one property for another. I don't know if we can do that because, um, not the same, but I know at the state level, if you're in the urban growth boundary, you can do same, same, like for acreage amounts, but I don't know if that's the same for... So I'll ask if we can change, like, take maybe something out and put that in. Because we could take a portion of the park property out, like the Easter portion, and include one of these parcels. So I'll ask that question.
All right. Yeah, I, first, I'm a little leery about getting anything into the state, particularly with the regulations that they come up with. I just... There is something that, that always makes me a little uneasy about that, to tell you the truth. At any rate, I guess basically what the council's saying is, uh, go ahead and research that a little bit further.
Did, what, what was it that you were looking for this evening, Counsel Kaufman?
If we're gonna move forward, everything has to be ready to go, um, in January, probably February for this. Then we need to make sure the zoning's correct and that there's no surprises. Because the state won't go through a zone change. They say it takes long. So that would be something they have to decide. That needs to be done. We need to get that started right away. And then the other question I was wondering about is, I was looking at that map and the access to the park property is an easement. Do we need to verify that we can make that a private rent?
Um, that can be included in the discussion that we have with the attorney and the appraiser.
That's what I'm thinking. So that would be a cost to the city to figure out if we could do that. But we're gonna need to know that answer for the park anyway, because I'm assuming the city's gonna wanna develop that. And could be the benefit of this is they pay to have it developed and we can use it. Okay. And I'm conservative that somebody might be encroaching on that property.
Counsel Brennan, that was just, say, as far as I'm concerned, I'd say go ahead with what you have to do.
Okay, Counsel, are you pretty much in agreement with this?
I'm in agreement, sir.
All right.
I respect your opinion about problems with the state, um, but...
Well, I don't like the regulation, to be honest with you.
I think, I think...
And I'm, I'm leery about those regulations. And, uh, there are three certain ones in particular that I'm a little bit leery about. But, uh, I'm not about to go into them now. The council's, uh, made up its mind and that's good enough for me.
And it may be that ultimately it's not feasible, but we can, we'll, we'll find out. Okay, so I'll get with, um, the attorney on both of those easement issues and hopefully have something back for you for the December meeting.
All righty. Okay, well, we got that taken care of. Not too much pain.
Yeah. What about the zone change for the park property and hundred partition? How long would that take?
Um, I don't think it'll require a zone change because it is zone residential.
I thought it was one R. They're gonna do a cottage cluster cluster, we're gonna need the three R.
Right, but it wouldn't necessarily be, because it's just, it's another, um, residential designation, but we had talked about rezoning all of the properties. So that's another thing that was gonna be coming before you guys next month. So that may just resolve itself. And that was based on the housing study that we adopted in whatever, August or September, about making all of the residential zones where they can have more denser housing. So, yes and no. I mean, I don't think it'll be a zone change just for that. It's gonna be, we're gonna be changing the zones for all of the residential zones because of the housing study. Minor partition, uh, that if we don't have to do too much in the way of the road, um, that's just a staff decision and having the surveyor prepare the plat for us. So again, that shouldn't take too long. And it shouldn't take that long because now that the survey work has been done, they can, um, they just will need to set new pins for the, whatever the area is. And I do wanna walk it with, um, Mr. Nudal because he was saying there was about an acre in that northwestern corner. That would be suitable for, for that. But I just wanna, I wanna go out and get it myself and see what he thinks.
Ms. Minister, what's a plat?
That is a specific type of map of survey. There's, there's maps of survey, which is where you just have a surveyor come out and, and survey your property. A plat is a specific type of legal document that creates either by partition or subdivision more lots.
Okay.
So it, it, if three or less is a partition, um, more than three or creating a road is considered a subdivision. And plat is the special type of map, and that has to meet certain, um, Oregon state survey standards.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. So what you have in your, in your packet right now is what we call an annual survey.
Thank you.
All right, anything further on that? I think we're all settled there, right? Let's go ahead and have an update on the prior dangerous buildings.
Okay, this, this is for, um, the, the one on the very westerly material, Mr. McCann, Mr. and Mrs. McCann's property. At a couple of meetings back, and I excuse me, I don't remember which one. Um, we had decided that the, the dangerous building portion was, was completed and that any additional work that needed to be done as far as removing debris and stuff would be took care of under the nuisance ordinance. And I believe we asked them to post no, no trespassing signs, but, um, I don't think that's been done. So I'm gonna contact Mr. McCann and just, you know, people shouldn't be on the property, but we can't trespass people unless it's, it's there. Okay, so for the Crook material property, um, new photo there. Yes, it looks horrid.
Yeah.
They are, I, I had, um, my assistant Anthony went out last week just to double check. Um, there are test fits and they do actually have, um, a permit in the queue with DEQ now. We, we looked it up on the website and they have, they actually applied for it quite a while ago, but they were waiting on other, other stuff. But as of last week, they're, they have completed everything they need to complete with DEQ in order for them to come out and do, um, their existing system review. And hopefully that'll happen like this week because it's not raining. Because once it starts raining, I don't think DEQ does inspections on test pits after that, because they can't tell if it's rainwater or something else. So, um, and then he has obtained a demo permit. The reason why he hasn't demoed the building, according to him, is that until he gets the word from DEQ, he doesn't wanna remove the building. So, um, so yes, slow, slow progress, but, um, he actually has paid money and obtained permits, so that's a good sign.
All right, fine. Thank you for the update. Uh, Counsel, do you have anything that you would like to wish, uh, wish to have? All righty. As long as there is work, he does have the permit now, uh, or DEQ, and so, and he does wanna tear the place down. Good, okay.
Something by the end of the year will be gone.
Good, good. Let's hope so. That thing's been a nuisance for a lot of years. All right. ODOT-related topics. This is the Small Cities Allotment Funding and Possible Lane Reconfiguration, um, info presentation schedule. Go ahead with that, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Mayor, who sits on the committee that, that gets the dollar amount of money for the SCA grants, um, fortunately, we were funded. That would've been very bad if you, you had been on the committee and given the...
I wouldn't have had egg on my face. There's no doubt about that.
So, um, this is what, this is a reimbursable, um, loan, I mean, a grant program. So we will, um, go ahead with the project and then after we have done the work, then they reimburse us up to a hundred thousand dollars, which is pretty awesome. Um, the engineer and Will had already, um, I, I believe all the engineering stuff is already done. So now in the springtime, we can bid the project and it, and it's, it's a relatively small project, so it should go pretty quickly. Uh, Will and I were talking that, um, maybe won't do the work until after school gets out because it's gonna be right there at the school. And because it's really, I mean, in the life of capital projects, six months is really not that long. So, um, so the work may not get done until the summer, but we'll see. Um, it'll depend on how much disruption it would be at the school, but I think it'd be better if we just waited. Um, Mr. Neval from ODOT, who's our regional rep, he, Mr. Mayor and I were talking before the meeting. I believe it was Counselor Campbell that had brought up the, the, the discussion on Third Street several months back. I think it was you that had brought it up. But at any rate, they did some, uh, traffic studies, um, and then also on the possible lane reconfiguration, what they call the road diet. Um, so they do have some data that they would like to, um, share with us if the council would like to have a presentation. I, um, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, what I call the dog and pony show. They'll come over and, you know, do the PowerPoint and show you everything. Um, when I spoke to them last week, I was thinking that probably December would not be a good time, just, just because of the holidays and all that. So maybe for the January meeting, if you are interested in having the ODOT folks come over.
Let's go ahead and have it for January. Uh, once again, like I mentioned to you earlier, for everyone else here, uh, I received two more complaints on that section today. Um, it is a dangerous area. There's no getting around that. And, uh, even more so during, you know, the holiday, I mean, the summer season. So if there's anything that we can do to go ahead and alleviate some of that, that'd be great. So January...
And they can come and talk about possible, I can tell you right now that it doesn't meet the requirements for a signal, which I knew, I knew that.
We went through that.
Yeah. Um, but they said they do have some, um, some mitigation things that could possibly be done at that intersection to help reduce some of the, it just, everything comes in weird there, so.
Yeah, just real quickly, I have to excuse me, I'm not sure. ODOT came out with something new and I just found out about it at the, uh, at the, uh, Small Cities Allotment Conference that I went to when we were, you know, deciding who was gonna get what and everything. And this can be kinda problematic. ODOT was sued because they didn't have bump outs at one strike. They, they only went up to a certain area so they'd get excluded and not have to pay for it. Anyway, they were sued for the whole thing on Safety and Disability Act, you know, the ADA and all of that stuff. Any time that we have work that has anything to do with a budding estate highway, and I'm so glad we don't with this one, with this hundred thousand dollars. The city is then responsible for those bump outs to make things, you know, as far as, uh, making things safer and what have you. I found out, and what they say is that they can cost up to twenty thousand dollars apiece. And you would have to have probably four of them. Which means that if we had, if we were to take advantage of this, um, say another hundred thousand dollar grant from ODOT, we could easily spend eighty thousand dollars if it had something to do with that street. We would have spent eighty thousand of it just on that loan, just making it. And we've gotta be careful how we, um, how we use, you know, the projects that we decide to go ahead and use. In fact, is any project that has anything to do with Highway one oh one, you know, Ellensburg, we've gotta be a little bit careful about that. So there, I'm sorry, ma'am, that's all I wanted to mention.
Okay, so I'll contact Mr. Neval and tell him, uh, January, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Once we have a cooperation, can we invite the library and pull the chimney tree?
Um, actually, I had planned that because what had started the conversation, why Mr. Neval had contacted me, was Main Street had contacted him. So, um...
What did the library manager have contacted you?
Um, we had discussed it in the past.
Yeah.
But, um, specifically Third Street, but the whole road diet thing, Main Street had contacted ODOT again about it. So when, and I had, as we discussed earlier, I had talked to some of the Main Street folks last week and I told them this, that we would be discussing it tonight and likely it would be January. So I'll make sure that, um, their board is notified so that they can be here for that.
Okay, uh, Counsel Brennan, did you, did you have something that you wanted to say?
No, I'm just, let's see that they're gonna come down and do a presentation.
All right, thank you, sir. Any further discussion on this? All right, then let's go ahead. There's an L C D C roundtable, invite Reed Ford, uh, November twenty first. How, administrator, and, uh, in your view, how important is this sale for me to attend or, or to have a council presentation?
It probably would be nice to have one or more of you attended, just because L C D C, you know, they do regional things, but they don't come out real often to our area, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I think if possible, Ms. Madison would be a good choice for that. I already, I was...
Okay, good. So then, if you wouldn't mind, you know, report back on what it is. I may, um, depending on what's going on, then I, I may send Anthony also if I can't make it. So at least he can, um, it'd probably be good for him to see the commission because he's met the D L C D staff, but I don't know that he's met the commission people yet, so that's probably a good thing.
I might attend, too.
It's close. They don't come down very often. The last time they were in our area, they were actually here in Gold Beach, and that was probably four or five years ago.
Right.
So it's a while.
Yeah, and I...
And it's a round table, so they talk about lots of things.
Do you want to invite one of the commission to attend, not for a paid in marriage?
Sure. All two of them.
All two of them.
Yes, actually, that's a good idea. I will, I will contact both of them and see if they, they would like to attend, yep.
All right, then we have an L O C Municipal Fundamental Workshop in Coos Bay on December twelfth.
And they had specifically asked me to include it in the packet, not just to let, you know, like in my C A report. So, um, it is in the evening, but, um...
Five thirty, nine thirty?
Yeah. So, and they are, I will say that L C D, the trainings that they put on are, are really quite good. And even if you've been to them before, there's always stuff that changes, so, um, you know, they're... they're going to be talking about public meetings, ethics, you know, your responsibilities. So if you want to go, and you don't necessarily have to go to the one in Cusby, that was just the closest one, um, just let me know if we can schedule it.
What time is that?
The one in Cusby is, uh, five thirty to nine thirty on the 12th, which is a Thursday. And I want to say it's, um, it's at Cusby City Hall.
Yeah.
So if you want to attend, just let me know, and we'll be signed up.
All right, thank you. Administrator, your report, please.
Okay, um, and you'll notice I stayed from the backwards. I apologize for that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, totally how well that I am. Um, yeah, when I looked at it, I'm like, here's that. Okay, so Public Works, uh, the crew has, you know, they're busy just getting ready for the wet season. We did some patching a couple of weeks ago because tide water was going to be shutting down for the year, so we got, got some, um, hot AC to do some patching. Um, one thing that was kind of exciting, I thought, and if you have a chance, you can drive up there and look at it. Uh, we installed a new type of catch basin that Dyer Partnership, I think they designed it, because we, I think we built it and they had designed it, but it's a new kind of catch basin that's cleanable, and it's kind of at an angle like this, so when debris comes down, it can be easily removed. Um, they tried this out for Brookings a couple of years ago, and it's been really successful for them, and so they were set in some of our more challenging areas where Riley Creek Way, we've had a couple of land sites on that road at the top. It's right at the edge of the city limits, and debris comes down the hill. Last year during the storm, well, this year during the storm, it was a problem. So it was kind of cool. Um, Will took me up there this week and we took a look at it. So if you're in the neighborhood, you can go to the top of the hill and look at it. Um, the east side of the park is officially closed for the season. The bathrooms will be secured until spring and we take the dumpster out. That's not to say that people can't use the pavilion, but, um, but it's, it's closed, closed for the summer now. Um, for the police department, the stats are attached, and then at the end of the last meeting, Chief Wood had talked about that we'd ordered some, uh, special cameras for the park. Um, we should be getting those anytime, and then once we get those installed, uh, once we get them, and he's going to work with, um, Public Works to figure out what's the best place to put them in the park. And they're really kind of cool because there's, it's one unit, but it's got three cameras that can move independently, and you can do it all from your phone. So it's kind of cool, so anybody can, well, people that have access, not anybody. Um, we can remote into it and look at it and move the camera without actually having to go down there. So if we know that, you know, we're having a particular problem in a certain area, we can point those cameras at that area. So, I'm, I'm pretty excited. We've just had these for a while and said they work really well, so it'll be good. Um, fire crew, the, I don't know if you saw the newspaper, the, uh, the pilot had an article about the gun barrel factory down in the Wincheck, which I didn't know that was down there. Not sure the zoning of that, but, um, anyway, they had their bad fire there, and we did respond for mutual aid because it was a pretty, pretty hairy big fire. Um, just south of town by eighty acres, even though we're into November and we did have a little bit of rain in October, it's still really dry out there. So, um, there was a fire that was, um, a pile burn that was set by some contractors. Legally, they had a permit. Well, it flared up overnight after they had left and it ended up running, so, um, so just caution, and, and I think we all know because we see the news that, you know, California's burning up, and it's still pretty dry out there. So we need to have a significant amount of rain for our, our dangers over. Um, we, for the visitor center, Gold Beach was, um, not the city of Gold Beach, but Gold Beach Main Street was the one that applied for this grant through Travel Oregon. Um, on the west side of the, um, Interior Coverups Building, you will notice that there's an Oregon is Magic mural that is part of a campaign that Travel Oregon is doing right now. It's called Only Slightly Exaggerated. It's kind of cute. Um, and we're one of only eight communities so far that have been given this mural, and it's part of what they're calling the Oregon mural trail, and it's kind of cool. Um, at first I didn't really understand the significance of who the rock guy was. You have to watch the video, then it gives you a little bit better, and you're thinking the same thing that I was. Yes, you are. Um, when you watch the video, it makes, it makes more sense who the rock guy is, um, and so I put the, the web address in there, how you can watch the video, but he is, he's turning on the switch to turn on the sun and turn off the sun at night. And so it's kind of cool. We had, um, the official dedication on the 25th, and, uh, like I said, Interior Coverups offered to host it, and it'll be kind of cool to see how many people, um, try to do this trail, because the Travel Oregon campaign is that, you know, you go to each one of these trails and snap a picture. And somebody from Main Street, and I'm going to have, I'm going to talk to Leslie about it, um, talked about, we could put a spot on the ground where you could take a selfie so that the camera, so that the mural is right in the back, and it's kind of cool. So I think we'll put a target on the, on the parking lot so that, you know, where to stand and take your picture. So it was just kind of cool. Um, okay, now that our meetings are a week sooner, I mean, it, it was most of the time I didn't have all the tax receipts in by the tent because typically our meetings were too close to that. So I'm definitely, now that we have them a week sooner, we're definitely not. So from now on, the reports in the, that I provide to you will be from the previous month. I'll have the stats on number of visits to the visitor center and our web bits, but I won't have the tax stats until the following month. So what's in there is through the end of September. Um, we're just now starting to receive the October receipts, but the statistics that are in the report are, um, up to date as far as the visitors and our website traffic. Um, Debbie, as I said at the last meeting, our former director Debbie, um, left, and she headed east to go to Tennessee, um, to be closer to her family. And she, her, her last day was the 11th, and she officially left on the 12th. Um, I hope all good things for her and her new adventure. I don't know that I want to go to Tennessee, but, um, but it does have mountains there, so I guess I'll kind of advise. Yeah, I know. I bet she was trying to find a place that would have a lower cost of living. Um, we organized some stuff down at the visitor center, some of our, um, Naomi, who is, was our only other full-time person, she's going to be our lead person down there now. Um, I haven't really decided yet whether I want to replace the director position or not, um, but to replace Debbie's hours, um, some of our part-timers are just to have more hours. So at this point, we're not hiring any new staff, but in, when the last foot season gets here, we might revisit it because things start getting busier then, but right now it's the off-season, so we don't need additional staff. Um, the auditors were here last week. Um, I think things went really well. They didn't ask me for much, which kind of freaked me out, so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Um, they will finish the work, their initial work, and then pass that on to all and all who are the auditors that actually prepare the report. And they will likely be here the first week of December to do, they just do a one-day thing, so they'll be coming, and then hopefully we'll have the reports by the end of the year. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Brennan, and I were at the Curry Medical Center dedication. Um, that was actually, it was really well-attended, that was a nice event. Um, they're supposed to have their state survey and inspection this week, and it sounds like if they pass everything, then, then they can open the ER. That's what it sounded like. So I know when they built that facility, like, whatever, ten, fifteen years ago, they had in mind that it would eventually be that, so I don't think that they have to convert that much. Um, so it was just kind of cool to see everybody there. Everybody seemed really excited about it, so.
I was surprised at that. That's the first time I ever was in that building.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, you're just too good of a VA.
Well, I was talking to, to, uh, Counsel Brennan and a dear, dear lovely wife, and they had been in it before, but I was surprised at how large and, and how well-equipped, uh, you know, but it's a very nice-looking building inside. Yeah, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, I, my, my primary care doctor's there, but I've also been to the urgent care if I've gone to the rhinitis, I went down there. I've always got really great service there, so. And supposedly when the ER opens, they are still going to have like same-day visits.
Oh, okay.
Um, so if you can't, you can still go to the care.
Yeah, well, I think Jenny was saying something.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be good. Okay, and then I'm still, uh, working on the arm repair from Hades, so hoping to have that done because my life is agony, so.
Yeah, I hope you get that done too, really. Get that all the way before the...
Oh, and then one, one final thing that I printed off for you. Um, I just came across this last night when I was reading, and it talks about blue spaces. Why time spent in your water is a secret to happiness. And it talks about how, um, that it can help with mental health and depression, and any water is good, but they found that statistically that living next to a body, a sea or an ocean was the best, so. So it's good for our mental health that we live here on the coast.
Oh, good. All of a sudden I feel very happy.
Don't you?
I am.
Okay, and then this is...
And happier I drown. Uh, okay. I do have one question, Administrator, concerning that, the LSC's Full Cities Meeting, I think it's supposed to be this month. Have you heard any word on that at all?
No, I haven't. Had to look it up while you guys were talking.
I appreciate that. Thank you. If, I don't know, I haven't seen anything, but it could be using the government one, and I don't look it at that often. All right, Counsel, Counsel Madison, do you have anything? Oh, yes, ma'am, you've got a list, right?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I want to say that Halloween this year, the town was awesome. I don't know if you guys noticed, but there was a lot of families, like parents out with their kids. More traffic than I've seen in years, so that was really exciting. I think there was a lot of pop-up events that encouraged folks to come out as families, which was great. Um, do you want to cover the events of Rebecca?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm working on a youth collaborative, um, with some STEM partners locally, but my primary focus is CTE, so a lot of our local stakeholders have been asked to participate in that, so I think we'll see some good stuff come from that. And then I had a youth ask me why I went on to the dog park. I said, "That's a great question for the council, why don't you come and ask?" So I'm anticipating her coming to ask about that next month. Um, she wasn't for a change in the meetings, so next month she'll be here, I think.
Okay, I'll get the stuff from, we, we've talked about this before in the past, so I'll, I'll bring the stuff that we have, and we can have that discussion again. Is it, yep.
And I'm wondering if that, at some point, might warrant a Parks Committee. Somebody had also asked if we could put doggy bags by the disc golf because, let's see.
I think we do. I think there is one receptacle down there, so yeah, we can probably add another one. Because we, we have one at the park right now, and one at the visitor center and at the park, but I'm not sure where in the park it's located, so if we need another one by the, by the disc golf, we'll just do that.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Counsel Brennan?
I don't have any.
Okay, Counsel Cal?
Um, there's going to be a fair board meeting in the evening at 6:00 PM on November 15th, or, no, this Thursday, this Thursday at 6:00 PM. And the reason we're doing that is that there has been complaints in the past that the meetings were, that working individuals couldn't attend, because the meetings are from noon, they work noon to one for a while, or one to two in the afternoon, or ten to, you know, it doesn't matter, it's working hours. Um, so they are having a, um, board meeting at 6:00 PM on Thursday, so that if any of, you know, hopefully we can get more public there. Um, and the other thing was, I thought it was, um, I wanted to give you an ad boy mayor for the hundred thousand dollar grant. I think that's awesome. Thank you for doing that. I'm, you know, it's one of those mayor things that you have to, I, I consider them mayor things. You, you're always on committees and going to far reaches of the earth and being placed on boards, and, um, this one had a little dividends for us, so thank you for your time.
You know, be real honest, um, I always feel guilty when I'm asked to be on something and if I would say no. And the reason for that primarily is this, I think I've discussed this with Counsel Brennan before as well too, but I'm always thinking that somewhere down the road, we might be able to have something that we would not otherwise have, and I said, "No." You know what I'm, do you understand what I'm saying? A lot of these things that, that I do are primarily, um, they don't, they don't benefit us usually right away, but down the road they can. And, uh, so, yeah, it, it does get a little weary in a ton, but on the other hand, uh, you know, to me, the city is worth it. And besides that, you know, I've got such a pleasing personality, the rest of you'd probably blow it. So I always figured that it should be me. And then, oh, and then it's, but thank you, ma'am. Counsel Brennan, please.
Um, will the council be open to, um, a brief urban renewal meeting next, next month, maybe before our council meeting? Um, the purpose would be if, I'm assuming, I have to have a conversation with Brookings Main Street, but they did not meet their rare person. Um, and I'm wondering if we should just wait here, or if we should, um, maybe help them find some other way of getting help, so.
You know, you bring up something, but forgive me for interrupting, but I had totally forgotten about the rare person. I thought that this person was supposed to be on board here within another month or so, or at least this month, wasn't it?
September, actually.
They could not find a person.
They could not find a person.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because last I heard, they had found a person. The person was, uh, ready to be, be her, you know, whatever she was supposed to be, or he or she.
I need to check and see when we decided we were going to have meetings. I'm, I'm actually glad you brought that up.
So I, I think you'd be...
I think we decided we were going to have like quarterly anyway, so.
If you're open to it, then I'll talk to Main Street, see if they have an, like, I have an idea, I'll share it, and what are...
Are you thinking around, around January, is that what you're saying?
No, I think just before December, the December meeting.
Yeah, I...
It'd be really short, just to ask a crazy question, I think.
What time is that?
And I think we're actually due, I'll double-check to see when we decide we're going to have meetings, but I think, I, I'm sorry, because I think I dropped the ball on that one, because I think we decided we're going to meet quarterly, and I don't think we've met since like...
We have any subjects, or what has said something?
But still, um, okay. And I'm actually, um, there, they coordinated a phone call with the Ford Family Foundation, who was the, the other portion of the funding, um, for, I want to say this Thursday, but they wanted to talk to me and, and the Gold Beach Main Street and them to talk about Plan Bs. So that way I'll have some information for you for the next meeting, for what Ford is saying.
Yeah, it's a good point, Counsel. Thank you. I, I totally forgot about that myself, honestly. It would be nice if, is there any indication whatsoever that there is a rare person that, in short, that we can, uh, that there might be one available?
No, we just found out, and that's why we're having the phone call this week, is we just found out last week officially, they had been still trying to, to find somebody. Um, and they, they did interview two different people at two different times, but evidently both of them decided they didn't. Because it's an interview for them too, they decided they didn't want to come to Gold Beach.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we did area talk again, to add the truth.
Yeah, she was really fabulous.
She was, was indeed.
So, um, Mr. Mayor, I did check, the, um, Small Cities Meeting, the next one is, uh, the 20th of this month, which is, um, the third Wednesday in Kokil. And so if you would like me to get you registered for that?
Yes, ma'am, if you would, please.
Okay, and then if anyone else, if anyone else wants to attend the Small Cities, just let me know, and I'll get you guys registered.
Any more comments, Penny?
Yes, ma'am.
So I want to congratulate us for not having done loss. I was at a, uh, National Property Manager's meeting, and there's a jurisdiction outside of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and if you have three police calls, you're required by law to evict the tenant. What, how many third housing violations might you have for that one? The jurisdiction would have it, and the one guy that was there was explaining how you handle them, but it's like, I can't imagine having such a stupid law on our books.
Yeah.
So, kudos to us.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Um, I, I'll, mine is, is kind of brief. Um, the, um, Small Cities Allotment were predicated upon merit, all right? It was kind of funny, I went in there that morning, you know, for meetings. I went in there that morning, you know, for me, and I told them, I said, "We better hit something," you know, and I told them, "We deserve, it's a safety thing, if I got it, I want to see it." And he said, basically, he said, "You know, Carl, you already got it." You know, it was already down there. But lest anybody think that there was solely my involvement in there, it had a lot to do with the proposal and the project that both the Administrator and our Superintendent of Public Works put together. So thank you, ma'am, you guys did a terrific job with that, and that dovetailed right into what we, you know, what they were looking for, and thankfully, I don't know how much the fact that I was on that board and had not missed a single meeting on that thing for three years, how much difference that made, but it may have made some. And so, at any rate, we got it because of merit, primarily because of merit. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
And that was all Will. All I did was the paperwork.
Okay, well, then, if you would give Will a good pat on the back for me, and I think the Counsel as well, that would be great, because he did a good job of putting that together. So anyway, I don't have anything else to say that I know of, and once again, I'll read this, effective in November, actually, well, actually, this is the first one. All of our meetings will be held, our monthly meetings will be held on the first Monday of the month, instead of the long-time practice of meeting on the second Monday. The next recordly scheduled City Council meeting is the Monday, December 2nd, at 6:30 as usual. So with that in mind, and normally I give the, if there's anyone out there that would like to make a comment, I want to thank the sergeant for being here with us and protecting us and what have you. I know that that is not the most exciting aspect of police work, but thank you, sir. And anybody in the audience would like to say anything? Okay, with that in mind, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I do. He has never listed the. All right, questions have been made, it has been seconded, I'm not going to bother about the discussion. Question?
I.
I.
Next.
Well, thank you all very much for being here. Thank you, Counsel. By God, we got through that pretty doggone good. I was expecting, I honestly was expecting a much longer meeting.